Yeah, on the record.
The tape was running.
All right. Like to go ahead and open the public hearing session of the Warranton Board of Alderman meeting for December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. First item on there is the SP ninety-seven for K four performance.
Jack's got a pizza.
Mister Jack Hannif, would you like to come up and present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item we have is site plan approval request for K four performance, SP ninety-seven, to be located at one thousand Warranton Outlet Center, Suite Number One. On November third, two thousand fifteen, a request was filed for a site plan approval for an indoor/outdoor sports training athletic and family complex to be located at one thousand Warranton Outlet Center, Suite Number One. Property is Zone C three, Highway Commercial. Per Appendix A, three commercial, A entertainment event major, two outdoor facilities, a conditional use permit is required. This site plan approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with the conditional use permit, CUP forty-seven, approval request as required per code. The motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent and two vacancies at the December third, two thousand fifteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions, and I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, my planning zoning report and the public hearing notice. Any applicant is here if you have any specific questions.
All duly noted and should be. Any questions? Any question from the public? And not seeing anybody in the public, we'll go ahead and skip that part. Any questions from anyone else? All right, we'll continue on to the CUP forty-seven for K four performance.
Second item I have is a conditional use approval request for K four performance, CUP forty-seven, be located at one thousand Warranton Outlet Center, Suite One. On November third, two thousand fifteen, a request was filed for a conditional use permit approval for the indoor/outdoor sports training athletic and family complex be located at one thousand Warranton Outlet Center, Suite One. Property is Zone C three, Highway Commercial. Per Appendix A, three commercial, A entertainment event major, two outdoor facility, conditional use permit is required. This conditional use permit approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with the site plan, SP ninety-seven approval request as required per code. Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent and two vacancies at the December third, two thousand fifteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions, and I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, my planning zoning report and the public hearing notices.
All duly noted, thank you. Any questions or comments? Once again, not seeing anyone from the public except for the petitioner, we will draw the public hearing portion of the Warranton Board of Alderman meeting to a close. Like to open the Warranton Board of Alderman meeting for December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen at this time and ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which is standing. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
All right, next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda.
The first item we have is the regular meeting minutes from December first, two thousand fifteen, the work session minutes from December first, two thousand fifteen, the monthly grounds and maintenance report, the monthly building code enforcement report, the monthly police report, the monthly public works report, and the monthly admin report.
Any questions, comments on any of those? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Frederick, signed by Alderman Dreyer. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. Next item on the agenda is hearing from the public. We ask that if you come up and present anything, we ask that you keep it to a five-minute maximum and state your name and who you're representing. There again, not seeing anybody in the crowd, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, hearing from the Board of Aldermen. Any comments?
I'd like to make a comment about the gobble giveaway at the hometown Christmas. I want to thank the staff for all their hard work. That was a very enjoyable evening. We had a good time at the door, staying out of trouble in here and met a lot of people from the public, so it was very well received.
Working with Karen, staying out of trouble is hard.
It was a good time.
Any other comments or? All right. Next item on the agenda would be Mayor's comments, and I'll just kind of piggyback off that. I got nothing but favored reports and comments about the whole hometown Christmas as a whole, but I think we'll have, we'll have an update later on the gobble giveaway, so it won't steal all the thunder, but it was a, I think it just keeps getting better over the years, so I would definitely agree with you. It's nice to see that.
Don't you agree with me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
You know what? That's once and all.
[laughing].
All right. Next item on the agenda would be Boards and Commission appointments. You want me to go and read those off? You want me to read these? Okay. The Board of Adjustment for a five-year term, I'd like the reappointment of Rich Barton. And for Building Board, for a two-year term, I'd like the reappointment of Rick, Brigand John, Johan, and then Gary Scott and Fred Flake. And for Planning and Zoning for a four-year term, the reappointment of Scott Costello and John Deitch. And for Tourism Commission, a three-year term, reappointment of Rodney Haup. Is there any questions or comments on any of those appointments? That'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointments of Rich Barton to the Board of Adjustment, five-year term, Rick.
You already said.
Yeah, I've already said all these. Do I have to repeat these? Good enough. The reappointment of all the above.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Dreyer. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carries five, two, one. Next item on the agenda would be items removed from consent agenda, which I don't believe we have any, so we'll move past that. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from the Director of Operations and Finance, Officer Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is to discuss the scheduling of the January Plan Meeting. Hopefully you all brought your January calendars. As we discussed this on email and the possibility of planning this on Martin Luther King Day, we found that not everyone was available to do that, and resulting from that were some different recommendations about whether it should be an evening meeting, whether it should be a midday meeting. So I thought it best if we just bring it to this meeting so that you all can discuss how you want to plan it and then to get a date planned. So that's our purpose.
It was my suggestion that we do an evening meeting, knowing that some people are not going to be able to take vacation. And my suggestion was we could probably do it in an evening. We've done it the last two years as a full-day event, and I question whether we need that length of time, if we could recap where we've been of every year, we're going to do a full big plan like that when we've been doing all our planning, you know, some of the stuff we've been talking about already. So that's kind of where I went with an evening versus a full day.
Any input or comments?
I'm not a big fan of an evening meeting. I don't know that we, we think as clearly in the evening, that's always.
And that's true.
Because some of us, if you're working, you're tired when you get here, and you're just not as focused as you would be if, if we were to have a half-day meeting, or if we start at three, or something like that.
Would anybody be willing to give up their Saturday morning?
Not particularly.
You're not very flexible, bud.
Well, what time?
I would rather do a Saturday afternoon.
Oh, Saturday afternoon.
Well, how early is Saturday morning?
Well, obviously afternoon, so maybe ten to two.
I'm flexible on whatever.
I mean, it's January, not much exciting happens in January.
Is, I mean, is everybody pretty flexible with Saturdays? Or is there some, do you mean work schedule-wise or anything else?
Doesn't affect me. I can make it.
It's my only day to sleep, yeah.
Oh, for God's sakes, old man, you took a nap before you came here.
Okay. So what Saturday do we want to look at?
Give yourself ten years.
What Saturday do we want to do?
I was looking at the tenth.
That's a.
No, the ninth, I'm sorry, the ninth. Because the next weekend I'm out of town and probably out of town the weekend after.
I'd make an issue with.
Ten to two, Saturday, the ninth.
The ninth?
With ten to two work, and would you guys be okay with Saturday?
We'll do whatever you all want to do.
What do you got there?
I got a new phone that doesn't work, so as long as I get an email later on that says, reminds me, I'll be fine.
Maybe that's why you didn't get my email earlier.
Yeah.
So ten to two on January ninth, on Saturday.
Does that work for everybody down there?
Sure.
Sure. Would that allow you to get at least some sleep? Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Would that allow you to get some sleep, at least a little bit? Okay.
Okay.
He's working nights, so.
Oh, I'm like, why are you picking on him? Gary's the one who wants to sleep in.
No, he's, he's working nights, so I'm sure it's okay.
Okay, so did I get?
So if any of you have specific new items that you want included, please email me so that we can get them on an agenda for the meeting. Is it here?
Let's just do it.
I don't see why we wouldn't do it.
Yeah, I think it'd just be easier to do it here centrally.
Yeah.
No driving, no, far driving.
Yeah, if you could email that out as a reminder, because I'm serious, my calendar is having a hard day.
We can do that. Okay. The next item I have for you is the results from the customer service quality survey. If you remember, we included a mailing card in the newsletter. Timing of the newsletter was really unfortunate, that it was late, and I think because of that, there were a lot of comments related to that. We only received twenty-five responses out of the about twenty-eight hundred homes that the newsletter was mailed to, so that's a bit disappointing, but we did not get more responses. But of those that were received, given all of the different questions and categories, sixty-seven percent of the responses to the questions were either exceptional or satisfactory. There were thirty-three percent that said improvement was needed, or it was unsatisfactory. There were only minimal numbers of the responses that we were able, that either put a contact number or their name, so that if there was something, we could try to attempt to contact them back. Some of them, we were able to identify because we're familiar with what the problems were that we were trying to address. So one of the purposes, one of the hopes that we had was that if there were concerns by citizens, that they would give us their contact information, and we would be able to make contact with them in an attempt to try to correct whatever the problem was. We didn't get a lot of ability to do that, unfortunately. So I think we need to continue to do this. Hopefully, the responses will increase through time if they see that we are really looking and listening to what's being said. But I was a bit disappointed that we did only receive twenty-five responses. But wanted you to see the results and what the comments were, that we did get back on those cards. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can about that.
He's pretty self-centered for me, but any questions?
No. Okay. The only other thing I have under operational updates is to ask the chief to provide the information on the blood drive.
Sure. Just another reminder, a week from today, December twenty-second, from one to six, are at the blood drive that we're hosting, will be over at the Elks Lodge. I'm encouraging everybody to try to make an appointment beforehand. I know the early appointments basically are pretty well taken up. Appointments are really easy to make. You can get online at redcrossblood.org, put in City of Warranton, take your right to our blood drive, and you can plug in a time there. Or I'll even make it easier for folks, you can call the police department, and the girls up front will take your information and will get you scheduled up. You know, it's a particularly critical time of year. They always run short this time of year, so it's really a great way for folks to give something to the community, and it's, you know, it's easy, so.
So is it true that if you know when to pass out from giving blood, they do or do not? I know they're for a while, they were kind of skeptical about taking from people that actually do pass out.
If you pass out? Oh, no, we encourage that.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
With hands and everything, I'm sure.
No, there's, there's, there's no issue with that. And in fact, that was something that we talked about on LiveWire, is there's, there's so many people that think that they can't give, when in fact they can. I actually had a couple of people in, at City Hall, who thought that they couldn't, and we worked through that, and, and they got signed up, so.
Excellent. So if they have questions, they can call.
They can contact the police department, or they can contact the Red Cross. There's actually an eight-hundred number online that will help them to decipher whether or not they're eligible.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have?
All right.
I have a question. Did we ever get, since guys here, did we ever get a full reading on the Cochran proposal on the water runoff issue relative to Robin Lane and that whole area above there? I know we got the engineering report back.
Yes, we did. We had that report, and we went through it. We can bring it to the board.
Is that going to be coming to the board at a future meeting, or what's the?
We were working with Cochran to get some more information on that. We did get the report back from them.
So there's really nothing to report to, to the public on that?
That's correct.
That's what the engineer said?
To what we're going to decide what the solution is for that.
When do they think, when do you think they're going to have a response back on that?
I can have that, Terry, if it's okay. Next, next meeting?
We can provide the details of what was in the report. The problem is, it only addressed the Robin Avenue size of the culvert. The real issue is generated above.
They didn't talk about above?
Well, they talked about it, and that there's a problem, but there was really not a, here's what you can do to resolve it. And so I asked Guy to go back to them, because I think we would be very remiss if we deal with just the culvert going under Robin Avenue, and we don't deal with the issue at the top of the hill to try and keep so much water from flowing, so.
I thought that was the whole point of their engineering, was to look at the top of the hill. Because we already knew that we could put a culvert in, it wasn't going to fix the problem, but I thought they were supposed to go after the top of the hills. What do we pay them for?
Well, it was to determine if in fact the problem was coming from a different location, and if it was, where it was generating from. So it really was to look at the area, and they did do that. But now I think we need to take it a step further to determine what the resolutions are, and it's going to be a broad-spectrum solution, in my opinion.
Right.
Because it appears that up at Hawthorne, the stormwater that was supposed to flow off of those roadways into a detention pond really never goes into the detention pond, but goes around it and comes down the hill. So there's going to have to be a solution to how to get the water into the detention pond, or get it somewhere else to retain it before it flows fully down the hill. So I think it's a much bigger project than what we asked them to do. Really what we asked them to do is tell us how to fix the Robin Avenue overflow problem. And then we kind of broadened that out and said, okay, well, we know part of it's coming from up here, so would you look at that too and confirm that? Well, they did confirm that, but now I think we need to go a further step. Now that we know, how do we fix it?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to do that.
I agree. So we can bring you the information about what their findings were, but we can't bring you the, here's what we do to fix it up above, because we don't have that piece yet.
Well, I think that's what the public's looking for, is, is how do we fix the problem?
Right.
You know, and what's the source, and what is, how are we going to fix it, and what's the timeline, and what's the budget? All those kind of questions is what they've probably been asking for quite a while. That's my guess.
Yes. So we are working through it, but I think it has grown into a much larger engineering study than what we originally thought, that we originally thought the problem was just the undersized culvert going underneath a roadway, and.
Oh, I thought we thought it was above the hill for a long time.
Well, we thought it was, we internally, but we're not engineers, so, you know, we needed to have that confirmed by someone who knew more than what we do. So we're working on it. We certainly can bring next meeting, if you'd like, the results of what we do have.
Well, I mean, if all you have is we need a bigger culvert, that's really not, I think that's going to be disappointing for the people who are concerned about it, because that's been talked about before. So they, I think they were looking for something more concrete in terms of, you know, this could be fixed above the hill to minimize the problem at the bottom of the hill, but it sounds like we don't have anything to tell them about that.
Well, we can tell them that, yes, that's part of the solution, is that it is coming from up the hill, but that's going to take engineering that area specifically to determine how we fix that.
Yeah, I thought that's what we were getting for engineering, because that's what, when I met with the citizens below the hill, that's what they were expecting, was an engineer to come in and say, this is the source of the problem, and here's some solutions for fixing it, but that's not what we asked them, apparently. There was a lot more in scope than that level.
Yeah.
But we are.
We are working on it.
Working back towards them and, and talking and asking questions.
Yeah, I think in budget, we had a pretty minimal engineering amount, because originally the discussion related to the size of the Robin Avenue culvert. Once we got into it, then we realized that it was a much broader. So I think total budget was like three grand. My guess is we're going to come back to you now and ask for fifteen grand, so that the engineers can give us the solution to the big picture, not just the size.
Yeah, I guess I didn't understand, because I told people that we were doing a significant amount of engineering work to determine the fix at the top of the hill, instead of spending three grand to just say there's a culvert. I, you know, maybe I just didn't understand what's there, but clearly I didn't speak truthfully to the people in the ward that, that are dealing with the issue.
Well, we had to determine where the water was coming from, and then that was part of the engineering of that. And we knew it was coming from, I think it was Buckhorn Court, a big part of it, and then they did the surrounding area of everything that's draining down in that area, and, like I said, going around the detention pond and not even going in there at all.
Yeah, but we knew that before the engineers even showed up, right? I mean, because we were out of, we were out at the site, and we determined that, so I don't know what we got for our three thousand dollars, but.
Get a piece of paper that authorizes that for an engineer, whether it's good or bad, whether we like it or not.
I think if I was a resident on top of the bottom of the hill, I'd be highly disappointed with the report, so what the city's doing.
Continue working on it, don't see if we can't get more precisely what we need.
We are doing so.
I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda would be hearing from the zoning officer and building commissioner, Jack Hannif.
Once again, it's the site plan approval request for K four performance, be located at one thousand Warranton Outlet Center, Suite One. It is a proposed indoor/outdoor sports training athletic and family complex.
And there's a bill later on the agenda to cover this.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to have the applicants come up and talk about their project. I think it's interesting, exciting, and I know more, very few people listen to zoning, but a lot of those people listen to the city council, and if they could talk a little bit about that, I think that'd be great. Would you guys mind coming up and speaking?
Just.
Go ahead.
Should get a stretch of legs.
Hello, Board. Name is Jeremiah Coke. We run K four fitness and Hop Kito Plus Martial Arts here in town. Been in town for over fifteen years. We're, we're, just to bring it all the way back, we're three years ahead of our five-year plan, which, when we very first started this venture, we set up a non-for-profit for kids as far as for sports application, for individuals that can't necessarily make the cut, whether it be, you know, through monetary differences or otherwise, for them to actually receive sports education and kind of keep them on the straight and narrow, because every time I'm driving through town, I keep seeing the same kids, you know, rowing packs, the same kid on a, you know, chopper, bike, smoking cigarettes and all this stuff. One of my students just went down probably about, about three months ago from heroin abuse and things like that, so anything that we can do to kind of, you know, to get that kind of stuff. But the entire complex, per se, is going to be married, not only with the comprehensive plan, with what Warranton's got going on, but then also with the war program for the non-for-profit, and then also be an exciting number-one attraction, but also something for the residents to do. We're linking up with the Silver Sneakers program on top of it, so the elderly, not the elderly, but the older set.
It's the elderly, it's okay.
I love you, Gary. The older individuals that qualify for the Silver Sneaker program are able to come in at zero or no cost and use that. I love you all dearly, by the way. But also, we have a lot of very exciting things that I don't think that has ever really came to this town before, as far as Ninja Warrior training. I have over seven trainers that are coming in to not only do fielding and hitting coaching, batting practice, agility training, strength training. We're actually looking at strength competitions. We have AOC, actually, who does a good amount of production for Fight Hard. They're starting a side project, which is AOC West out here. We're also trying to develop a smaller niche MMA program for kids to kind of also bolster that and kind of keep them on the straight and narrow. So I think between that and Hop Kito is just going to be awesome for everybody. Outdoor volleyball, sand pits, and competitions, just a whole bunch of greatness, a whole bunch of greatness, you know? So I have to honestly say that it's not a business, really. If it wasn't for Hop Kito, this place wouldn't exist, so it's the house that Hop Kito built, pretty much. And our names might be on the lease, per se, but it's a family house, and we've always ran it that way. So everybody that comes in, your family, if you can't afford it, then we're going to flex to the non-for-profit side and see if we can kind of, you know, pair up like that. But what I am most excited, though, is, is I've sat in on a few of your meetings for the comprehensive plan, and, you know, we're trying to do great things and develop, you know, a little bit better infrastructure around here as far as to accommodate new families, have attractions that they can come in and actually do. So I think it's, you know, going to kind of marry in together very, very well, yeah.
And so this is, if I understand it, the old Liz Claiborne building?
This is the old Liz Claiborne.
So you're going to be not only using that facility, but the space outside?
Exactly, on the west side.
Right, on the west side.
On the west side, yes, it's going to be quartered off, and the diagrams and everything in there, it should be in everybody's packets as well. If it does take off and does very well, the end of the five-year plan, I may be back to you guys, because we may be looking to build something a little more egregious, because right now we're at two different locations, and it's kind of hard in between, like flexing from one and going to the other, even though the packages are combining, it just might be a lot more advantageous and easier to encompass everything in one side, you know? But that's, that's way up in the distance, it's kind of a pipe dream at this point. We're just excited on the path that we're at right now.
What's your timeframe?
Timeframe, actually, we have twenty-four months to go ahead and see if the community is going to support this. We're not only broad-based, we're doing a broad-based. We're not only just looking at the Warranton, per se, we're looking at all the outlying areas. I know Montgomery City, we're getting a lot of draw from them as well to bring them in. Wright City is a huge component right now, and I'm actually getting people hitting up from St. Peters and St. Charles to come out and use the Ninja Warrior program, the people that are actually doing the competitions and stuff like that. So what, and we were interviewed with the newspaper here a little while ago, and this gets a broad base around your question, but my tag was, is like, I wanted to get people to actually come to our town, because, you know, we're conditioned. You want to go see a movie, you go east. You want to eat something good, you go east. You don't really stay in town too much. There's about two or three restaurants you can really eat in this town, you know, if that. So bringing them all in here would be great. If everything works, per se. If everything works, per se, I would look at to be a three-year component plan. If everything works out within the next year and a half, I'll have a better idea, okay? If it does, it does; if it doesn't, it doesn't. But then again, it also really depends on the war program, Warrenton Athletic Resource, which is that non-for-profit, you know, how much money or support that we're going to have for that, if that's going to be able to be a strong component, you know, to kind of help support that for, you know, as we get going. So, about three and a half years or so, about three. So, there's a lot more info than you needed.
It's, it's good for everybody to know.
Well, it's good, it's good there's a non-for-profit setup to help those kids who don't necessarily have the financial wherewithal to, to participate in stuff like that, because it's.
I think I said last time, we had about 24, I think that number's actually going up, it's went to 27 kids that are lined up right now to get this thing going. So, as soon as we get this thing done, because we had that 5K, and we're just kind of sitting back on a little bit of funds that we're getting ready to go into, and we're going to be working with Hibbit Sports and a couple other places here in Johnny Macs and whatnot, to go ahead and get either discounted or discontinued equipment, so this way, they can come in, they can go ahead and just do like an exchange, like if they got a pair of cleats, they throw down $5, we swap them out, they get a new pair. $5 goes into the non-for-profit, and then we have another smaller size that we're able to go ahead and process out to somebody else. So, that's another going to be a big component. You know, and if you've never really had the money, or, you know, the parent guidance or whatever, to do it, and you walk in, and you're part of the team, and you're wearing a jersey, and it's got your name on it, and you've got all the equipment, you're there. You are there. And we're trying to fill our roster right now with not only coaches, but also life coaches. So, not only they're just doing, you know, they're teaming the team athletics, but they're kind of guiding them, you know, in the right path, so to speak, as they kind of go, you know? And I think that I got my hands on a couple of really good guys, you know? Been with the family, as far as the Hop Kito Plus family, for a long time.
If a person, and this is off the zoning issue, but if a person was interested in supporting the non-for-profit side of this, what would they do?
We are actually going to have a subset of our website, which is going to be very, very easy. We're also looking to start a Kickstarter backer campaign coming up, so there's going to be a multitude of different ways to support. Even then, on, if you wanted to talk about monetary donations, that's the easiest way to kind of, you know, bridge that, you know, cash check or whatever. But on the other side, like if you have an old pair of shoes, old pair of cleats or something that are, you know, lightly used, that you don't have from, you know, way back when, and you're like, I don't know where to go with these, you can donate them in, you can get a tax credit for that, and you know it goes to a good kid.
Any other questions?
What kind of team sports are you going to have there? Talk about having coaches and teams and stuff.
Right now, since we're working with a 12,000-square-foot flight plan, most of it's going to be agility training, hitting practice, and things like that. So, this way, I know that it's going to be a 24-hour deal. When we get going, and we start assembling teams, and this is like a five-step process that we haven't put in yet, because I'm waiting for everything to get proven and all this stuff, I need to go ahead and talk to the City of Warrenton and talk about using the athletic complex and renting time, which will be paid out from the non-for-profit. And this way, when, you know, we have the sports plan, we, everything's here, and then we can start having money on concessions, you know, application fees and, you know, spectator fees and stuff, to where the idea is, is that 100% of that goes right back into the non-for-profit, and it's this secular thing that just keeps growing. So, the good part about it is, is not only, or, you know, to answer your question, it's going to be football, baseball, soccer, sorry, and then a couple other. I'm trying to get rugby in town, which is a faster-growing sport, and we'll see if that works. But when I say it's good for all parties, the city gets revenue from us renting the spaces, the non-for-profit makes, the residents see that, that not only K-4 Performance, but the City of Warrenton are teaming up for the good of the community. No out-of-tax dollars are spent. Everybody's making, everybody's happy. That's the plan.
You have anything to ask about dogs?
No.
Okay.
Dog training?
He's just giving me drugs.
I'm giving them.
We have a new dog training class.
You have a dog training?
We have a new dog training class coming in January.
There you go.
There you are.
Maybe they'll ship in a.
Train Eddie.
Train Eddie.
I'd already spent $900 to do it myself.
How'd that work out?
Not so well.
Any other questions?
Thanks for taking time.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. All right, next item on agenda would be hearing from our city clerk.
Hang on a minute. We have the conditional use.
Well, I'm sorry about that. I thought we had covered that.
Unless that was all included.
Thought we had covered that. I apologize.
That's fine. Just wanted to make sure that both of them was addressed.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on the conditional use permit? Number 47. All right, now, we'll move on to Melody.
The gamble giveaway was rescheduled to December 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There was a total of 139 prizes, and that evening, approximately 738 tickets were given out to participants who registered for the prizes, and over 100 tickets given out for donations of the non-perishable food items. And when Brad's department took the food to Agape, it equaled approximately 640 pounds of food. So, it was a great turnout.
It was good. Thanks again for doing all the extra work.
It was a lot of extra work. I agree. It was a lot of time and effort put into it, so thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions, if anyone has? All right, move on to bills to ordinance. Entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill number 48-15.
Subway.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Friddick, signed by Alden Frederick.
An ordinance amending section 125.050 of chapter 125 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri by adding Martin Luther King Day to the list of holidays.
Entertaining motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 48-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Frederick, signed by Aldman Delloy, for the second reading, passage of Bill number 48-15.
An ordinance amending section 125.050 of chapter 125 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri by adding Martin Luther King Day to the list of holidays.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0, or, bill carries 6-0. All right. Second item will be first reading of Bill number 49-15. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Dryer.
A zoning ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for K-4 Performance located at 1,000 Warrenton Outlet Center, Suite Number 1.
Entertaining motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 49-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Friddick, signed by Alden Frederick.
A zoning ordinance authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for K-4 Performance located at 1,000 Warrenton Outlet Center, Suite 1.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0, or, bill. Next item on agenda would be the entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill number 50-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Dryer.
An ordinance approving the conditional use to allow K-4 Performance and indoor-outdoor sports training athletic and family complex located at 1,000 Warrenton Outlet Center, Suite Number 1.
Entertaining motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 50-15.
So moved.
Second.
We'll go with Aldman Frederick on that, and Alderson Hawley.
An ordinance approving the conditional use to allow K-4 Performance and indoor-outdoor sports training athletic and family complex located at 1,000 Warrenton Outlet Center, Suite Number 1.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderson Castily?
Yes.
Motion and bill passes 6-0. Last item, or, next item on the agenda would be entertaining motion for first reading of Bill, Bill number 51-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Friddick, signed by Aldman Dryer.
An ordinance amending section 609.050 subsection 3 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri relating to special event promoters permit.
Entertaining motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 51-15.
Before we do that?
Sure.
Just for the, I mean, I think we, we've talked in depth about these other amendments, or these other bills. Would there be some value in just getting a brief explanation of what this bill is before we vote to pass it, just for the sake of the public that's watching?
Are you able to bring that up? No?
Do what?
Are you able to bring that up, or not?
I don't know who's best suited to, to give us it. Terry, can you, can you? Yeah, and really, like I said, I think we've covered the, the other three bills that are on here tonight that we voted on. I think, yeah, I think everybody knows, yeah, but to just, I don't guess that anybody knows, just based on that explanation, what we're voting on, so.
Sure, if you have to do.
Thanks.
We originally took a look at this because effective January 1st, the state no longer will have a promoter's permit available, which is an option that they had in the past. And this really addresses those functions, like the Artisans Guild once a year has a craft show, and so they have multiple individuals who participate in that. And prior to this changing by the state, they were able to have a promoter who would be the person basically responsible, who could get the state permit. They could hold their function, we've got everyone needing, each one of those individual vendors needing a sales tax permit, and then they could report on a specific form to the state all the sales and take care of the sales tax part of it. Well, come January 1st, that is no longer an option with the state. So, what we did was to look at our ability within our code to find a way to allow those functions to continue with a promoter with a license, to be able to do it, to allow some of those groups to still hold these types of things. So, the city attorney and I looked at it and found that in our section, under the special event promoters type permit, the only issue that we would have was language that basically said that the promoter was required to provide copies to the city of the sales tax license of each one of those individual vendors. This removes that language and puts the responsibility on the promoter, which is where